For the special meeting for the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, great. All right. So, in terms of for selectwoman's updates, I was fortunate to attend a conference last week that was focused on early learning and early childhood development. It was really an interesting conference and I'll probably come back to the board in maybe a month's time and highlight some of the interesting takeaways from the conference as well as some opportunities we might have as a town to, you know, create some new thinking around this or possibly policy implementation. So I'll come back and give more detail and and perhaps talk about some of the ideas that came out of that conference. Otherwise, not too much to report. I know that we've had, if there's any members of the public, we have some outstanding requests on ARPA funds. I've pushed that off until our September 23rd meeting because we're gathering information on a few others that we still need some background information and then also we're expecting the bid proposals on Garvin Point to come in next week. So I thought it would be best that we tackle ARPA once we have like all the information and can just make some final decisions. Because we're on a timeline where we have to have the funds, POs, basically purchase orders issued by the end of this year. So just so any public members here are, you know, wondering the status of that, that'll be at the next meeting at the end of September. And with that, I'll turn it over to any liaison reports or selectman comments. Anybody?
No one.
I'd like to give an update on Academy. The Building Committee continues to meet regularly every other week. And there is a certain quickening going on now as we're getting ever closer. Over the course of the next month, the Academy project will be in front of a number of the town's land use committees. And over the course of the next month, the design process will finish up. And we will be going out to bid towards the end of October. The committee's calendar continues to be on schedule in that there should be information available for the community and the Board of Selectmen about December 1st in terms of what contractors had bid to carry out this project. So the planning process is wrapping up now and the end of the planning's part of the schedule is insight.
Great. Great. And maybe I'll just do a quick reminder that tomorrow we do have our 9/11 remembrance ceremony. It's at 5 o'clock on the town green and that's always a very somber but nice ceremony, I will say. And we have the flag displayed there now with 300 American flags. So just want to also put a reminder out to the public that if you're interested, that starts at 5 o'clock tomorrow on 9/11. Any other comments or questions?
I have one announcement.
Okay.
Alright, got a frog in my throat. So the Madison Youth and Family Services is recognizing National Suicide Prevention Month by offering the town a virtual walk this month of November. Residents are welcome to join in the effort to bring awareness to the issue of suicide and how to support their loved ones. National data tells us we lose someone to suicide in the US every 11 minutes. This is intended for Madison residents, but anyone can sign up. To sign up, you can visit the Madison Youth and Family Services webpage or email Justin Ziegler at Participants can walk, bike, skate, run, any movement on their own time and pace, 11 miles or 11 minutes each week during September. Participants can track their progress, learn about suicide prevention, and win some prizes. So more to come on that.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to citizens' comments. We're all virtual today, so are there any hands raised, Jeanne? I don't see anything.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, all right, great. All right, there'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting if anybody wants to make a comment relating to the agenda. All right, moving on, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved?
Moved. Taken.
Any comments or questions? With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Great, all right. I'm six passes unanimously. Item number seven, discuss and take action to accept Ed Lent as Madison's first poet laureate as recommended by the EC Scranton Memorial Library.
Removed.
Second? Al's second? Okay. All right, so basically this is a follow-on conversation and I've invited up Allison from the library as well as Ed. And I think you'd gotten in your materials kind of the draft proclamation that the town would be proposing when we do this. And then the application materials that had been submitted. And we talked about this, I think, in June. And I know at the time, there wasn't like a lot of details about what the we didn't have a draft proclamation or anything like that. So so with that, I turn it over to, hello, welcome, Allison and Ed. And maybe Allison, if you could just spend a moment on process. So this is going to be through for a three-year term and then what your library process is in terms of the appointment. That would be helpful.
Sure. Thank you, everybody. So I'm so delighted to work with Ed. He's an extremely talented artist, painter, as well as poet and writer. And the town of Madison is rich in the arts in painting and writing and theater. And Ed approached us and volunteered to be the poet, first poet laureate for Madison. There are many, many towns in Connecticut that have poet laureates. I think, I think it's close to 70 now. And so Ed would be the inaugural poet laureate for three years. At the end of the second year, we would begin the process of starting to look for the next poet laureate. There would be an application process that would be run through the library. And Ed has sent me a great inaugural list of ideas of things that he'd like to do as far as having poetry slams at the library, having thematic poetry months, doing poetry in the little park that's across the library in front of 24 Wall outside, doing a townwide poem together. And so we've just been really impressed and really excited and we think it's a great fit for the library. Bring the community together, all ages, and celebrate poetry.
And maybe a Madison historical bicentennial poem.
Absolutely. That would be really cool for our, yes, for our anniversary year, yeah.
Any other further questions for Allison or Ed?
Well, I feel like we're meeting a rock star here. I've never met a poet laureate. So this is kind of a big deal. Exciting to meet you, Edward. Do you go by Ed or Edward? You're on mute.
You're muted. Yep.
Famous Zoom habits. Hey, hi, nice to meet you as well, also, everyone, and thank you.
I didn't.
And he goes by name.
We're gonna all be rock stars.
I see a Madison poem in our future. Fantastic.
It will be a community event, I promise.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
And I think maybe having, you know, Allison coordinate with my office, maybe we can have some sort of launch event or whatever, you know, for us and that would be great. So any other questions from the board members? No?
Thank you for stepping up and doing this. This is pretty exciting.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a great, it'd be a great addition. Excited to see how this, you know, how this shakes out and all the new exciting things that we can bring to town with this. So okay, with that, I guess all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, excellent. Well, there you go. You'll get the proclamation and then we'll get this moving. And we'll maybe try to get some updates and maybe occasionally invite Ed in for a special poem for the Board of Selectmen, so.
That would be great. Thank you so much, everybody. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Talk soon.
All right, thanks. Bye-bye. Congratulations.
Thank you, Allison.
All right, great. Well, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is an update on the Neck River Elementary School building project. And I kind of added this a little bit last minute because I thought we had a lighter agenda and I just want to, I thought it was important that we get some updates. We're going to have some updates on other town projects at the next couple of meetings. So Graham was kindly, so the superintendent, I don't think is here or anything, and this is more, I grabbed Graham and I said, hey, why don't you give us an update? Because obviously we see a lot of exciting things going on at the school. I love the drone videos and all, you know, all that stuff that the, the school district has been putting up on the website. But obviously, one of the biggest topics is where are we on the budget and are we good on our timeline? So I will turn it over to Graham, if you wouldn't mind. I did get that slide you sent. Do you want me to show that or do you just want to talk to me?
I can just describe it in general.
Okay.
It's not, you know. So I appreciate, you know, thanks for the filling me in on a slow news day here and moving the, moving the meeting early so we can all watch the debate in the comfort of our own home. Depending on how you, if you're doing, if you've got a drinking game plan, you know.
Bar, or a bar, right?
Drive carefully. That's, you know. So, yeah, so that, you know.
I don't think I'd survive that.
So as recall, the, when you charged us back in the, you know, like two years ago or so, you know, one of the charges was to come back and keep you updated. So this will suffice as a update on where we stand. We are about halfway through the construction schedule, 15 months. So we're about seven and a half months in. For those of you, you know, been, I've been able to visit the site and drive by, obviously the steel's up, the walls are going up. Everything, I can gladly say, is on schedule. So everything, the pre-purchased equipment that we purchased, the electrical equipment that we purchased in advance should be showing up in a few weeks, which is a key to maintain the schedule for our completion in May. So the idea is to close the building up, you know, late this fall so we can work through the winter on the finishes and turn the building over in May. We, we still need to bid the furniture and some of the technology stuff since we typically hold off till, you know, later in the game. So that's on schedule. So we have that money allocated. So, you know, so far, so good, knock wood. I don't want to jinx us, but it appears we're on schedule. Relative to the budget, we are, we are on budget. And, you know, potentially, you know, we have, we have contingency and we also have the money that was previously provided to us to cover some potential contingency and cost overruns. It looks, you know, I don't want to, again, I want to jinx it, but it looks very likely that we will be able to return that money to, as we promised, and we said before we spent any of that money, we would come back to the Board of Selectmen and, you know, ask you, you know, if, you know, to spend it. But it appears right now that we're not going to need that money and would, you know, probably be able to turn it over to you. That, you know, that being said, you never know. You never know till you don't know. But, you know, we're on the ground, the, you know, the most likely problems are going to be something to do with the ground. And there was, there was some, you know, topsoil issues we had to deal with that were covered, you know, out of the contingency. But other than that, so far, so good.
And just so, you know, for members of the public, a year ago, we had transferred money, which we were able to do. The public approved a certain total bonding amount and we shifted some of that money from the new, Paulson renovation project to the new school project. And, and I, I'm forgetting how much that was. I should know this.
Five million dollars.
Five million, that's right, yeah.
Three, four, five, three and a half.
And just also to remind, the purpose was that the school, you know, the state construction authority or whatever requires that all the funds be appropriated for what was being estimated at the time. And we knew that, we were hoping bids would not be at that level, but we had, you know, costs have been all over the place, obviously, with the inflationary environment we were dealing with over the last couple of years in the construction market. And so that was precautionary measure to make sure that we had everything on paper to cover the project when it went out to bid. Fortunately, the bids came back in a more favorable way, right? And those bids were received, when were those bids received?
Maybe nine months ago.
Yeah, yeah, it was a beginning, okay, so, you know.
It was early, yeah, beginning of the year. It was right about New Year's.
And we started to benefit, I think, a little bit from some of the slowdown in inflation and also the, it was really the supply chain issues, right, with COVID, started working themselves through. And so we kind of benefited from that and we saw some of the costs come in at a lower amount. So.
Timing is good, yeah. I mean, January is a good time to bid. Contractors are hungry. They want to, they want to build their backlog for the summer and it was, was a desirable job, you know, for contractors. It was a nice, clean, not a fussy renovation. So I think, I think we, you know, multiple things, you know, came, came together, provided a good bidding environment for us, knock wood. Yeah.
So I just want to, I was giving that background again, if people are watching and that was kind of the history behind that transfer and with the caveat that the board made that if it was not necessary, rather than just taking the money and buying further amenities or whatever for the, for the new school project, we wanted to see that return to Paulson because that's a longer-term project, right? And even though we felt comfortable, we had enough there, because this is going to be protracted over multiple years because we're renovating a school, we wanted to have that extra buffer. So when can we get the money back, Graham?
Clarification. So we created budget headroom in the project so that it could move forward. The dollars we're talking about are really, was the promise of future borrowing, right? It wasn't actual cash in an account. It was, we were shifting some of the debt that we were expecting to incur from Paulson over to the new school. Do I have that wrong? Or is that, is that right?
No, I think, I think that's correct. In terms of bonding, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have borrowed the money until we needed the money.
All right. So, yeah, so I mean, given the fact that we had previously decided that Paulson didn't need it and now it looks like the new school might not need it, this could be an opportunity to reduce the borrowing by five million, potentially.
But I think, I think that we will be learning from the Paulson project, though, that they're going to probably want some of that money because they've gone in and done a deeper dive, you know, with the, what is going to be the most appropriate electrical or HVAC. And then the other thing is the timing of how you stage the project. It's going to be quite costly if you try to do this over a period of time versus doing like, you can't shut the school down, right? So, so anyways, that's for a future conversation, I think, Bruce. You know, and that's what, the Paulson Committee will be coming and talking to us next month or I think the end of this month about kind of where they are on their project. But I think the important thing is that the school is moving forward, honoring the commitment that that money will be kind of given back to the Board of Selectmen. We are authorized for a total bonding amount, right? And we have the ability to shift it back and forth between projects. Or if we don't need it, we don't bond for it. Right?
Well, right, right, right. I think we were, I guess I'm trying not to lose train of the, track of the thought that we were pretty assured that the Paulson project could spare the money. So I guess my concern is, what if something turns? The, the Neck River School says, oh geez, guys, you know what? We really do need that money. Thanks for sending it aside from us. Is Paulson now short? Is Paulson now not able to do its work?
Well, they're in the process of figuring out the next phase, just like with the new school. Now they have bids, right? They have real dollars. And this is the kind of conversation we've gone through with Academy. Paulson hasn't gone out to bid yet. They're working on estimates. So we'll find out where they are in their process, but the good news is that we're going to be, the expectation is we're going to be getting most of that $5 million back and back under the board to transfer back.
Right. That's fabulous. That's fabulous news and, and, and many thanks, Graham, to you and the committee for shepherding this through as quickly as you have. And it is exciting to see the walls go up. You can see the race to seal the building to the elements because a lot of work has got to happen over the winter.
Yes, exactly. And the wall, I don't know if you've been recently, but the walls, I mean, the north part of the walls are almost up already, you know, so.
And I know they finished the drill, right? The 70, 72 drills or something, I guess.
Yeah, I think just about all the geothermal wells are in.
Yeah.
Just the final piping, the tanks in there. So that's, and I should mention that not, this is not, including the $3 million that we potentially will get back through the IRA, you know, grants. So that, now that can't be, that can't, that won't come to us because it's, it can't be applied. It'll go to the general fund. But that's money.
Well, it'll actually go, yeah, that will actually have to be applied against the bonding as well. That'll be a reduction of $3 million against the bonding.
Right. So you won't, it doesn't help you on the 99, but it will save you on the money, what you actually need to borrow. Plus, the additional money we got for the, you know, the increased reimbursement for the school. I think that was, that was several million dollars additionally. So the actual bonded debt is going to be quite a bit less than for the school project than originally anticipated.
Right. So all good news, which is great. And, and then, and fortunately, we were able to deliver the school with a bigger footprint as well, right? That was prioritized. So I know there was some compromises made on the design and materials in order to get it within that budget, you know, more limited budget. But, but the good thing is you're, you're there, you're through that, right? So now it's, the, the number of unknowns are shrinking rapidly, right, in the project? So that's great. And just excited to see, you know, the progress that's happening and appreciate all the leadership that you provided to the Building Committee. You know, I know you were an important part of the Library Building Committee and, you know, you've been able to manage this one, which is fantastic. It's a great project. So we're very proud of it and I can't wait to go to the ribbon cutting.
Well, I do, and we have, we have a great team, great building committee, many, many of which are on the Library Committee, which is not a coincidence. It's, and we have a great owner. So we, and you know, the contractors, people work and live in town. So there's, there's some skin in the game for the, our contractor and, you know, so it's all good.
Great, great.
The cuts we made, you know, I think most people will go through the building when it's finished and be thrilled with the quality of the building. So I don't think, the reductions we made, I don't think will be perceived to diminish the quality of the building.
And I know there's going to be some conversations about the solar panels and all that at one point in the future. You know, that, that'll be a further discussion. But any other questions for Graham?
Oh, just thanks and carry on.
We'll see at the ribbon cutting. Actually, I'll be, I'll, I'll, I'll schedule a three-month meeting. I do, I'll, I'll do every three months. So I'll figure, three quarters of the way through, I'll be back and.
In the wintertime, once it's closed up, can we get in it and go see it?
I think, I think I can pull some strings for you. You gotta wear.
All right. You know a few people? All right. Cool.
Great.
Great, Graham.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Take care.
Aye.
Okay, item number nine is a discuss and take action to accept a donation from Neighbor to Neighbor to Madison Youth and Family Services for $10,000 for Madison residents in need of food assistance pending Board of Finance approval.
Removed.
Second? Great. And this is just, I know a lot of times we put these more routine ones in the consent agenda, but this was obviously a much more sizable donation. And I just want to highlight and thank again all the incredible work, you know, and assistance that Neighbor to Neighbor provides to Madison Youth and Family Services. And then, Scott, just, you know, when you talk about food assistance, I just thought for this amount, maybe just remind people, you know, the need out there in the community and how this gets managed and distributed.
So, thank you. And, and thank you, Neighbor to Neighbor as a part of Madison Foundation, a huge supporter of our social services here in town. And 100% of the money that they donate to us goes directly back to the people in our community who need it. So Madison does have its own social services department. It's run under Madison Youth and Family Services. So these are adults, oftentimes, parents, families that we are supporting that meet a criteria that's based on the state of Connecticut for fuel assistance. The money that they, so this money is, is going to go directly to our discretionary fund. So this money is going to be used for emergency energy assistance. So when people are, have applied for state assistance and they're waiting or running into problems with that and they maybe have gotten a warning that they're, or that they're aware that they're out of oil or about to be out of oil, they can ask us for a one-time payment and we will get them, usually get them set up until the point where they can get their state assistance through their, their applications. This money also helps us in cases where we might need some emergency housing or other rather dire circumstances that people face financially and allows us to, to help them.
Great, thank you. But always grateful for all the, you know, the Madison Foundation and all the support they provide. Any other questions for, by board members or? No? Okay.
Just a huge, a huge thank you. I mean, this is unbelievable. I mean, they do this every year, so can't thank them enough.
This is just a portion of what they will send our way. They make regular, as you mentioned, regular donations to us that we use for food insecurity in the form of gift cards for people for food.
Amazing.
Yep.
I know we're entering that time of year or two with winter approaching and all that. It gets a little more challenging. So with that, and, and electricity bills, as we'll talk about later. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, great. All right, thank you very much, Scott, for that. And then I'm moving on to item number 10 is to discuss the draft ordinance for Madison Youth and Family Services Board. So as part of our, kind of our ongoing process with the new charter, we, you know, decided that there were certain boards and commissions that we needed to put into ordinance. Youth and Family is actually required by the state, by state statute that we have an ordinance. And so Scott went back and kind of looked at the charge and came up with some recommendations on changes. I will be, full disclosure, I haven't had a chance to go through this in detail. I think I saw a draft of this a while back, right? And then, so I haven't, it's not fresh in my mind, but tonight is discussion and then typically then we'll come back for an approval process later. And then I think we're going to have to call a public hearing on a couple of these in like November to get them all approved so that we're kind of in that two-year timeframe with the new charter. I think we have technically till December to do some of these. But so with that, I guess I will turn it over to Scott. Do you want to just high level what changes might have been in here and what your model was for this?
So basically, we, we really just transferred a lot of the language we had from our bylaws into the ordinance. We did reserve a couple of sections that we would maintain as board bylaws and I can explain to you why. I mean, the ordinance really had to do with the functioning of the board, which is as an advisory board. So our board is not really making decisions about programs or it's, I don't report to the board in a way that some boards will operate. The purpose of our board really is, is a part of our educating and getting feedback from the community and then back to, from, from the community and then from us to the community. So there were two sections that we kept in terms of like the duties of, of board members and how our student representatives also interact with our board that we want to keep separate in bylaws. And part of that really is, if those change, we don't want to have to go back through this process to change an ordinance. Those are things that might change from time to time that really could be in the purview of the board. So we're drafting, suggesting that that would be still separate as a part of the bylaws. The ordinance really just speaks to the functioning, the makeup of the board, which again was all consistent. I think the things that maybe we, we changed or revised, we, we made some very clear distinctions about the terms of our board officers. And we also made a clear distinction of quorum that we're setting at 50%. And I, you know, I've had some conversations with, had some conversations with people around like, you know, like the purpose of quorum and really what, why a standard like that is important for us. We're an advisory board and we're, and even at times where we've not had quorum, there's always, for the people that are in the room, a desire to stay and listen and hear the report, which I'm often told not to do because then there's no minutes that you can't have any sort of official decision-making, even if you're just, you know, approving of things like donations. So if, if really our job is to hold the meeting and that, that's what we're trying to do no matter what, to keep quorum, you know, at a pretty reasonable rate, which half of their active members is how we would set it, it makes, it makes sense to us because that gives us our best chance of having a board meeting when we say, you know, we have them scheduled officially. So that's, that's why we set that.
And a couple of just quick things, because I, I apologize that I had not refreshed myself on this.
It's okay.
The, because you mentioned alternates in here, but I think like the board, since we met probably, the board has kind of taken a perspective that unless you're a regulatory board and voting on, you know, regulate, you know, where, you know, you're voting on, like, you know, planning a zone. um, and voting on, you know, regulate, you know, where, you know, you're, you're voting on like, you know, planning and zoning or whatever, where you've got, where timeliness is, is critical. Um, we're, we're opting not to have alternates. Um, you know, so it, it keeps it easier in terms of trying to, you know, staff, you know, get enough membership on these boards too. But um, it um, uh, I think it was just philosophically, we thought that the alternate thing was more important if it was a regulatory board. And then I noticed you also had a treasurer position in here, because do you guys, because if you're voting, because we ultimately accept donations, so is there any? Uh, do you have a responsibility for any type of specific?
The board, um, the, so the really the, the treasurer, um, uh, essentially tracks the funds that are raised by the board itself. So the board will um, will ask for voluntary contributions from members to do things that usually have um, more to do with sending, you know, like um, gifts or significant uh, gifts, but um, sending cards, you know, doing things that are more appreciation for board members and students at the end of their, um, of the end of their time on our board. So that's really the treasurer is tracking the petty cash that 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 is voluntarily offered by board members. It's more, it's like a sunshine fund.
Okay, okay. Because I just, I don't know if we have that position on the other board, that's all, but uh, uh, you've been having that though, right? This isn't a new thing?
Um, if, if you're consistently having a problem getting a quorum, perhaps we should make the committee smaller. Um, this is, I'm not sure that we can um, establish this as a, as organized under Robert's rules and then arbitrarily have a different quorum. It may actually be true. But um, but the reality is if, if you have regular absenteeism, perhaps we are oversubscribed and a more straightforward way would be just to have a seven-member board and just have a simple majority plus one, you know, have a, have a simple majority as your quorum. Um, I, I don't, I don't know. I, I'm not watching the attendance records of the meetings, but.
Very well attended.
Yeah, we, we, we met all, we, we didn't have a meeting last year that we um, didn't meet quorum.
Why are we concerned about the quorum number?
I think sometimes Bruce, it has a lot to do with the beginning of the meeting versus the end of the meeting too. So people will straggle in maybe because it's, you know, work, work hours and, you know, they had dinner and they're coming in late to a meeting. And and then, uh, you know, they want to get some of this business done at the beginning of the meeting and folks are maybe coming in at, you know, halfway point or whatever. So it's not always the full board there right at the uh, the top of the hour, so to speak.
And, and I think for, so, and for us, and I appreciate what you're saying and how, you know, if the boards are going to set a standard for quorum across all the board, your board is going to set the standard for other boards, then that's fine. I mean, I think we're happy to comply with that. I think when we were drafting this, the conversation at the, the executive level of our board felt this made sense for our board, so that's why it was drafted in there. The, uh, I think we're, we're maybe a little more vulnerable for attendance issues. When we get into the later parts of the year, your April and May meetings, so a lot of our, our board members tend to be parents. And when you get into that, you're into sports seasons and and lots of activities outside of school. So that's, that's where we've been stressed and I, I keep my mind, it's just that you're setting the standard where, you know, you just want to have the meeting as, uh, uh, and hold that as much as you can. Um, as I said, in, in the past, when we didn't meet quorum, there's always people who want to continue, they, they, they want to have the meeting, even if it's an unofficial one. And we're just not able to do that.
Say it again?
Oh, I just had a question about the liaisons. Um, this was the first particular ordinance that I noticed where it said liaisons could be or not be members of the Madison community. Can we talk about what the reason for that is? Staff, I'm assuming, right?
We should just list it as staff liaisons, because that's, I mean, we have staff liaisons to other.
Point Jen, because like I'm the liaison for the Board of Selectmen and I live in town. So I wonder if it's a difference between, you know, our elected liaisons, which have to be in town and then the folks that are outside the town.
Right.
And I think that And I totally get that with town staff, but I just wouldn't want there to be confusion for the public thinking that, you know, if you lived in, if you were just a general member of the public and you were from Clinton or Guilford or Killingworth, that you could be a liaison. It's, it's totally understandable for staff.
Right. I don't think we've ever seen language like that.
We've, we've since Scott had started this, we've come up with more of like a template, you know, I will say. So I think as we've gone through a couple of other these now, so you're getting the uh, the benefit, Scott, of other committees so, and like I should have probably spent a little more time going back and looking and comparing. So that's really, you know, we're trying to make things more consistent with all the boards, how that, how those, you know, and all that. So um, uh, well, I can work, get you some examples of how we've done it with some of the other ones, how we've written the language along liaison, because, you know, like, uh, uh, you know, we have, a, a liaison to me is like more of a formal, um, you know, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance has liaisons, those are appointed by the boards themselves. Um, and then you, but you, but the important thing here is you want to have two uh, youth liaisons, right? That's really the appointment that you guys control, right? Because we control staff and we control bo- you know, elected boards, but um, you guys want to make sure you get to students, right?
So we, we have two, two student representatives that we could count as liaisons, and I think that's kind of the idea here. But also a liaison from the police department, that that's been important to us.
Yeah.
Um, and that's actually um, part of the state statute and requirements for the grant that, uh, some of the state grants we get, they do stipulate certain members of the public that have to be on your board. So I was trying to keep that in mind, not write it into the ordinance. But knowing, you know, where we need to meet those, those uh, requirements as well.
Right.
Um, and we've had um, at times officially, maybe unofficially, uh, representative, a, a liaison from the um, parent representative council of the school. Um, so that's the central uh, operating group of uh, the PTOs in town. So we've had that before. We did have, we used to have a liaison to the arts bar, um, and not a position able to um, to maintain, and that's, I think, more of a capacity and time issue.
And that's where maybe um, um, like what we would want in the order, ordinance is more like anything that's required by the state. And then, and then, you know, we could then, and then other liaisons and as deemed necessary or something, just put some generic language in. Um, and I was, I was just thinking a little bit more about, you know, quorum, I mean, there's a couple of different things. My understanding is quorum is to start the meeting, but I don't, I think you lose, I, I think you can vote even if you lose quorum during a meeting. And um, that for some reason, I remember having this conversation, but that's something we can, a point of question we can raise with Nancy, right? The other thing is maybe structuring your agenda in two buckets, right? So that, that, you know, for board members, you can say, look, you know, you can have, uh, you know, the second part of the agenda is the voting agenda or something, and you know, that's, um, I'm just trying to think, you know, ways to assist you in managing that. I mean, obviously you guys have been very successful, right? And you function, you figure it out, but um, um, I think there's ways that we can address it, because 12 is a lot. But I know there's a lot of people that like to serve on the board, right? So.
Yeah, we haven't, I mean, we do have openings now, but they don't tend to last very long these days, so the people do want, and I think it does, the, the more that you're able to engage a group, um, you know, the more of the chances you're going to get some really active participants and people that are, you know, giving you feedback, wanting to be uh, involved in, in aspects of what you're doing. My, my concern really of the smaller amount of, a smaller board, you know, you, you're lowering, if you've got some people that maybe are, are interested and involved, but not that is active in some ways, like you just, i- in my mind, you just want as many opportunities to, to bring people in and have them a part of what you're doing as possible. And the 12 was really set prior, like that, that's been our, our number now for a while, so I think that
I mean, that's the largest board I think we have. That's bigger than even planning and, planning and zoning is. Seven, yeah, th- then they have alternates. So in terms of like seated board members, that's the largest board we have. And it's the only one that is um, not, you know, an odd number. Which I, I don't think you guys are doing controversial type of, you know, you're not regulator, so it doesn't matter as much, but uh, I'm just thinking about it. Um, um, so.
Well, given, given that it's an advisory board and, and that might be called out in the initial, in the preamble, um, that it's an advisory board, um, just for clarity. But I'm wondering why the need for an executive committee that is empowered to make decisions on behalf of the board, um, it would seem that those important decisions would ultimately rest with you and your staff anyway.
It, it is, I think those decisions are about, you know, our, what, how we're conduct, what we're bringing into the board meetings, the topics that we're, we're bringing up, so like it's, it's those kind of decisions. Uh, are we reaching, is somebody reaching out to a board member that maybe hasn't been showing up for a couple of meetings? So when we talk about the important business of the board and making those kind of decisions, um, I think at times too, if we've been asked to answer something, um, you know, whether it's um, you know, something that's, you know, like, maybe Peggy has asked me a question to run by the board. You know, like if we've got to get an answer back to, to somebody who's asked, I may just be able to collect the executive committee and then deciding what they want to, what, how they want to respond to something, if I can't get the whole board together.
Okay, because the language, it, 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 it says make decisions on behalf of the board.
Yeah.
Uh, when the executive committee deems that a decision is required before a legally called meeting can be held, that sounds like we're investing in this committee quite a bit of an authority. Um, and, and again, I'm trying to reconcile that with the advisory nature of the board and and layering on that, I don't think we've seen anything like this in any of the other draft ordinance that we've seen. So this is new.
I think just in, in looking at some of the other boards, I think there's a lot of infrastructure here and structure that I think is helpful to guide the board, maybe partially because of the size. Um, but I'm wondering too, as we're thinking about a template here, guys, like, I wonder if there's some things that we don't necessarily even have to have in the ordinance itself, that they just do and can run on their own as opposed to, I mean, do we need to, for a sunshine thing, do we need to have that in the ordinance as an example? Do we even need to note in here as an example? Like I, I don't know, like some of this stuff might, you might, it might be a on books versus off books kind of conversation. You know, because again, you probably want all boards to sort of operate the same way, but then, you know, how you do it is up to you.
Right, it's kind of like the, the bylaws. It's like the, it's their own bylaws.
Ordinance versus bylaws, exactly, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
And we are, we are endeavoring to do that. We do, we do have it where we're so most, so when we're outlining the duties of the board members as well as the student liaisons, that's going to be a part of our, we're suggesting that that be a part of our bylaws. As opposed
I don't think we want to get in a position of telling each board how to operate. I think they should be figuring it out themselves and what works for that board, what works for that board. I think we want to give them the basic structure.
Sometimes today's problem is the result of yesterday's solution. And if my memory serves me well, um,
I'll break it.
When this uh, uh, back when we got a very large federal grant many years ago, I think we had to beef up the uh, uh, how this board was run. And I, I'm wondering whether these are just artifacts of a, a past need that goes back more than 10 years. Uh, Scott Cochran, do you have any insight into that?
Yeah, so I think you're referring when we got the big, the large DFC grant and we needed to, we, you didn't have a um, a defined drug and alcohol coalition. Uh, so we needed to create a board around what is now made in Madison. Um, that I think is what you're referring to. The, honestly, so that, we've had a board in place with bylaws since the 1980s. Um, and they've been revised a few times over time and um, a lot of what I put into here was just based on the last revision that we did, I think around 2017.
I, I guess the question, well, maybe we spend a little time offline on this, Scott, and um,
No, that's fine.
And then um, come back with a new draft, um, because I'm sitting there thinking, and this is not as familiar with your board and what you're voting on at times, like what is being brought to the board. Um, you know, because that to me is really where, depending on what, what those agenda is, are that to me is where the critical nature of how you structure everything, right? You know, if this is just kind of more, it, it's advisory, but are you recommending policies that the town follow? You know, that kind of stuff is where I think it is really important that you have a very transparent structure about how the policies are getting formulated, you know, where they're coming from. And then, um, you know, you might have disputes amongst board members about some like the policy, some don't, you know, so that needs to be accommodated. So um, so anyways, I'm just thinking out loud a little bit, but um, and I think we got some good feedback from, and then we'll go back to our template that we have, um, and what we've done with some of the other commissions and then maybe come back with a revised draft. Does that sound good? I mean, 90% of this will stay the same, but there'll be these little nuances that I think we need to, to kind of work on a bit.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's, uh, the, the board, the board did approve of this draft, but also were informed that this was a, a step in a process and um, that we get feedback and I would actually, we'll be sharing the feedback in about 45 minutes because we have a board meeting tonight, so.
Okay. Yeah, and you can just tell them that because we've been doing this all year and bits, dribs and drabs, we've kind of, you know, uh, we're, we're, we're formulating a way to make more consistency with how these uh, um, charges look, you know, so that we don't have.
I'll share with you one thing, the, when you talked about like, wh- what, what does the board actually vote on? And I mean, it's a, a perfunctory that they approve of the donations that obviously are going to the town to approve. But the one thing that I, that do, that stands out to me, so we had a number of conversations at the board level at the time that the state was uh, considering the approval of, of the cannabis uh, legalization. And, and they were knowing the, the efforts that we were making to inform legislators and inform the public of concerns of that legislation back, this is maybe a year or two before it was actually passed. And the board each time was, you know, discussed this and, and they decided themselves that it was important to have um, a vote on, on a stance around whether or not the town, they, they would recommend to the town to support or to me at the state level to um, support the legislation or to oppose it. Um, so the board made a vote in terms of taking a stance to oppose the legalization of cannabis. Actually, um, a couple of times when that, when those, when those laws came up or that legislation came up for vote. So that, that's where they had utilized that um, advisory capacity and used the vote to be um, to be, to, to show that they were all on, on, on the same page when it came to that stance.
Okay, great. No, that's helpful, a helpful perspective. Um, okay, well, with that, then we'll, we'll, uh, this will be, uh, we'll come back, you know, probably in the next, in an October meeting with a revised draft, um, with uh, and, and you and I can spend a little time on it and then um, and we'll go from there. Good?
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, item number 11, um, I'm going to read this, I'm going to just amend the date on here. Um, uh, discuss and take action to approve the 2024 Plan of Conservation Development as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So moved. Great, and, and I add the 24, because originally it was 23 and then the process took a little longer and I think they wanted to kind of have the, this year in it, right? So, um, but obviously this was, um, and I'm not sure if Carol or Erin are here. This is the, basically, you, the draft, we kind of talked about this, I think at our June meeting. Um, and there, they went through a public hearing process, they made some minor modifications to it and then I think was sent around to you yesterday, the latest version, which is not too substantially different than what you'd seen before. They may need to make some still, I think they're still going and making grammatical and reference corrections. Um, technically, we don't have authority over this, but we can and the state statute requires us to endorse it. So I did use the word approve, um, which I was told maybe isn't the right word, but I think, uh, how, you know, we could vote to endorse, but I think just approving it, that we agree with it. Um, and it just goes on record, um, that, you know, that we're supportive of what the, the Planning and Zoning Commission has accomplished here. Um, so I don't know if Pardon?
They're not on.
Yeah, okay, because I think that they, we kind of gave them our feedback before and, and had that public hearing, but um, so I don't know if there's any further discussion about it, but you're familiar with the document. so I don't know if there's any further discussion about it, but you're familiar with the document now. And, um, I think it's a, a great document and it's nice to see this kind of box checked, um, and you know, so that we can move forward and, and they can start working on some of the, um, uh, changes that they want to make. I think the next step for them is going to be a look at the zoning regulation. So, um, it's been a huge undertaking for them. Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. With that, then, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Great. And then the final version will get posted on the website. So the public can see that, the pretty version. I'm sure there'll be a much prettier version than I think what we sent around. That's still kind of had a markup on it. Um, okay. Item number 12. Uh, discuss and take action to accept a recommendation from the Ad hoc Emergency Operations Center and Firehouse Expansion Building Committee to award a design build project contract to Munger Construction with a preliminary pre-construction services amount not to exceed $349,300 and to authorize the first selectman to sign all contracts and documents associated with this award as approved in the 2023, 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Let's go move.
Okay. Second. Yep. Great. Al seconds. Okay. So, um, this is basically, um, an RFP was launched. I think you got a summary. Right now, we just want to approve enough money to go through the first design development piece of this so that we can then try to work within our budget. Um, you know, this is a, um, exciting project and one that we received a federal grant for also. Um, and so, um, yeah, I, I think Sam is here. So if Sam wants to explain the process, we're going to have kind of certain steps along the process. So right now, that's why we only have the 300, this is not a $349,000 project. It's a three and a half million dollar project. So there'll be an opportunity to kind of, once we get a better handle on the project cost and the final design, then we'll have like a, the budget more flushed out for that. But this is kind of the first step. Sam, I don't know if you want to add to that.
So, um, so we, obviously we put the RFP out, we had five responses back, we interviewed, um, and I think we had six. No, there was five. And then we interviewed four of them. Uh, we cut out the, the top one because they were up around six and a half million dollars. Um, for the whole project. Um, and, and then we ended up having a second round of interviews with, with each one of them. And we ended up deciding on Munger. Um, and basically I know Munger's a little bit higher upfront with the design costs and the construction documents, um, but on the construction end of it, they're, they're a lot cheaper, they're only 4%. And all their insurance costs and everything else are a lot less. And I think you guys have that document. I don't know if you need me to share it, but I could if you wanted to. Um, so that's.
That was included in the packet yesterday.
Yes. Yeah. So that's why the committee, uh, is recommended to go with Munger. And, you know, obviously we have a, a history with Munger. Two other projects for us.
And, and I will say they have an extensive, um, experience in design build, which is different than hiring an architect and then going out with a project and then getting the bids, which we've seen can create a, a, a vast array of problems because here we can kind of, we have more control to design to the project because they'll also be doing the construction piece. So it'll help us kind of, I think, um, get a better handle on the budget for this.
The goal is to stay within the budget, although, you know, each contractor expects, expressed concerns with the soils down there. Um, because it's so close to the pond and, you know, they, we had a soil report done in, back to 2008. So in the contract, as we worded contract, they talked with Ben. And, you know, Ben, uh, Whitaker's been phenomenal helping us out with this, our new construction manager. Um, in the construction document, I mean, the contract document, we'll go forward in, in phases or tranches, as he's, he calls them. With, uh, basically not to exceed, so that we'd have, everybody have to be satisfied with the first level, uh, before we move on to the next. And if we discover if something comes up where it's going to pull this whole project out of the water, then we have to make a decision whether or not we're going to proceed or not. And that, that's why we're kind of pursuing this, this way, because there's a lot of unknowns with the soils right now. Once you get out of the ground, it's, it's pretty basic building. And then, you know, we can stay within the budget, but you know, Peggy alluded to that, uh, Munger's a design build, they have architects on staff, they have engineers on staff, so everything's done in-house. Um, so as we're designing it, we can sit down and figure out, um, cost as we're going along and try to keep within that budget.
Are reading this correctly that, oh, maybe not. So they're like middle of the road, right? 349 was sort of mid, middle of the road in terms of bids?
Yeah, they weren't the highest, um, but they were a little bit higher. Like I know nozzle was like 166 or.
Yeah, yeah, significantly lower.
Then they had, there's another 153,000 in there that we thought should have been upfront. And I don't know, Downs didn't put it up.
That was going to be more of a fee we were going to see in the beginning. So we felt like that 150 really was upfront. And then the percentage, you know, they were definitely, that's when he actually built the project, right? It's a, based on the project size. Uh, Munger was definitely one of the lower.
You're a lot lower, um, because we were looking at Bismarck, Bismarck back and they were at eight and a half percent once we started building the project.
Munger's at, Munger's at 4%, so they're the lowest from a percentage standpoint.
Yes. And then the nozzle was at, uh, six and a half.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, once, once we went through everything and asked all the questions, everybody, the committee was comfortable with recommending, uh, Munger to the board of selectmen and forward with this project.
So it'd be exciting to see this move forward. Um, any further questions for Sam?
Will there be discussions in this, in this process about, um, maybe leveraging those existing, you know, the existing buildings that are obviously going to be replaced by the new bay?
Yes.
Or just demolishing them?
That'll be coming up next. So what, what we're going to do is we're going to, you know, obviously apply for demolition permit. Um, there's a 90 day waiting period because of the age of the buildings. We are going to offer them up to anybody. They want to take them, it's at their own expense. So that, you know, up until deadline and then we'll have to just turn it down. So we, you know, if we start advertising now, at least we've got 90 days to, you know, for people to, um, see if they're interested or not. Like I, I don't know what it's going to cost to move a building like that these days, but.
Well, and I actually asked town staff to, to look at it, especially the one in the front, it was the old fish market, I guess.
Yeah, with Bismarck across the street.
Yeah. So we're kind of going to, we're having an internal review to see if, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a really cool looking old building, you know, the small one in front. Um, so if there is a way to repurpose that at one of our recreation, you know, uh, areas or something. So we're looking at it. We also need to see what the cost would be to move it. So that's a, a, a possibility. Um, and then I know Sam, they, the firehouse has made kind of a effort to, a, a reach out also to see if anybody wants it. So nice, it'd be nice to see them, you know, repurpose for sure.
They historical buildings? Are they considered or is it just sentimental buildings?
I think it's sentimental more.
So we did go through the EHP, the Environmental Historical Preservation Commission, when we put the application in. Um, it actually came through, that was one of the final steps for the grant, uh, award. So, so we're all through to, you know, went through all those steps already.
Okay. All right. Well, um, I guess with that, then all in favor of approving, uh, uh, item 12, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. All right. Thank you. All right. Great. Sam?
Thank you, everybody.
There.
Yes, Sam.
All right. Item number 13, um, is discuss recent town and school utility bills. And I put it on just as a discussion item right now, uh, because, um, I know everybody's aware, we all got the surprise, uh, in July and August of the, our, our electric bills. The town is not immune to that as well. We are subject to the same public benefits charges that any, um, rate payer is subject to. Um, and so we did get hit, really both of our buildings did. Um, and so I'd ask Peter to kind of dig through, first of all, just highlight what the current impact is. And then what would this mean? This, this, uh, agreement that's in place, uh, that the, with the public benefit charge, which is primarily 80% of it is due to a, uh, contract for nuclear power, basically that was agreed on in 2017 by the legislature that we have to buy a certain amount of electricity at a certain rate from this provider. And so, and basically we're making ever source whole, um, for the rate changes. So, because if they could buy it cheaper in the market, but we're making somewhere else, but they're buying it from there, then, you know, we have to supplement that. And that's kind of what has transpired into this public benefit increase. Um, so that ends in April. Um, uh, but, you know, it's still going to have an impact possibly this year. The other countervailing of this, of what we've gotten in the bills is we've done some things with our town campus, for example, with the new HVAC system, which is actually a lot more efficient. It relies on electricity, but we're already seeing a benefit from the new system because it's more efficient in how, in how much electricity it uses to run. Um, so we're not sure how this is all going to shake out. Um, but I thought, Peter, if you could just walk through kind of what we saw as a town, um, on our bills and then what you're kind of back of the envelope projecting that could mean. Um, you know, budget versus bill, that would be helpful.
Sure. Happy to do that. Uh, let me take you through, I'm going to bring up on my screen. Let's see if we can. Okay, let's, uh, I'm hoping you can all see this here.
Yep.
Okay.
You might want to, uh.
Yeah, I'm trying to enlarge that and it's, uh, there we go. That's there. That one. Um, so this is a snapshot and what I've done is I, if you look on the, uh, column, it says March 2024 rates. Um, I took our, our, uh, our uses there and actually applied the August 2024 rate to that. So that we had a really good idea of what, you know, we could see what the increase was. For the most part, if we can go down the line, you'll see there's some very minimal lease, uh, increases. But if you look at the yellow lines, this is where ever source really can hit us hard. And again, this is the town campus. This is one picture of one town building. So the FMCC charge, which, um, for those that don't know what that is, that's the federally mandated congestion charge went up 1,233%, which added an additional $1,150 to our bill. And then the system benefits charge, which is the one that everybody is talking about, that went up 3,697%, but only added $456 to the bill. So you can see that we've got a total bill increase, or a total bill that's up 22%, but the delivery charges went up 48%. Um, is there any questions on that so far about what, how these, how our bills are affected?
Well, and, and I would just highlight that it is based on volume, right? So the public benefit charges, all these charges are based on volume.
Every, yeah, every single charge is based on how much power you actually use. And they go up and down accordingly to the power that you use. And these are basically all delivery charges. So this federally mandated congestion charge, uh, part of this is related to generation, which is from millstone. The transmission is the avoidance of, uh, collision of the system. So they, they move, uh, purchasing around so that they don't overload the system. Uh, and then the other part of it is renewable energy. Those are the three parts that are associated with that FMCC charge. And this goes across the, all the town buildings, some town buildings. If you look at the top left corner where it says town campus distribution rate 35, we have some buildings at distribution route 30, and then the school buildings are at distribution rate 57, I believe. So on a higher level, I, I, I don't have a sheet here, but I'm going to tell you what we've budgeted and where we're uh, tracking to go to. I did figure it on a full 12 month schedule. So if we end in April, obviously it's to our benefit and we won't have to, uh, we, we may not be as, as, as short as we, we think we are. Uh, the school is tracking out to be at 872,809.18. Uh, we've budgeted 798,564 for a shortfall of 74,245.18. The town is tracking out to be at 383,592.62. We've budgeted 330,692 for the utilities for a shortfall of 52,962.
Um, so, and this is an estimate, assuming the full fiscal year versus, uh.
Going to June. That's correct. Yes.
And, and this is also based on our past usage history, not accounting for, you know, some of the changes that were, were, we, we, some, we might see some savings on, um,
Yep.
the town campus. And then we'll obviously have some natural gas savings, which isn't a huge amount, but that would also offset the deficit.
I actually did some, I did some number work on that. At, at, we currently were anticipating, um, 307,864 kilowatt hours plus the natural gas, which I roughly calculated out, the town had budgeted, um, for just the town campus, 64,651 dollars plus $6,000 for natural gas for 70,651 dollars. Uh, the estimate with the new geo system is using 257,220 or 260 kilowatt hours, which calculates out roughly to 54,024.60 and no natural gas. So there's, there's a pretty good savings on that. And that's, those are based off of today's electrical fees. So that would be, that's a real fee that we could expect.
Um, so the, you know, and, and all of the, um, the ever, the, well, this whole issue with the millstone agreement, all that, that's all about, um, the transmission and distribution, right?
The supply side. Transmission, yes.
Right. So the supply side, we actually go out and we hedge. Um, and so the good news for the town is we've been very proactive at hedging. So we've actually locked in over the last several years, very favorable electricity rates. So we're not, we're, we're not going to feel it as much as, you know, the consumer out there perhaps, when there's been greater fluctuations because we hedge. We're currently in a hedge right now that will expire a year from now. And one of the reasons we kind of timed all this is we knew that we're, our whole footprint's going to be very different a year from now, right? We're shutting down three buildings. Um, and then we have a new school.
Three, yes, correct. Yes. Yeah. Town Campus Learning Center, Ryerson and Jeffrey.
So we'll be, you know, shuttering three buildings. Um, and then we're opening up obviously a, 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 a brand new large foot, larger footprint school, but also much more highly efficient school that's also, uh, geothermal, right? So, um, so we're going to be working over the next couple of months and probably looking to hedge again, because the way the market is right now, it's actually a good, it might be the right time to go out and start looking at another hedge. Um, and then we're going to be forecasting, I know Peter's going to be spending some time looking at what our potential demand will be once all the, you know, the, uh, plans get kind of sorted out with the different buildings and we have new buildings open. So, um, so on the supply side, I think we benefited more than, um, the general public, you know, and, um, um, you know, because we've been able to do that. Um, but unfortunately we're subject to everybody else. And so just so you know, I've had a lot of, we had ever source in the office yesterday, um, and got our pound of flesh maybe out of them or tried to about this. Um, I've talked to our legislatures about it. I've attended, um, you know, it was a discussion today at our CCM meeting about, uh, the rates. It was discussed at our, uh, our council of government meeting. Um, so there's been a lot of touch points about this, um, and really this is just, I, I will say a unique kind of situation that happened from a regulatory standpoint. Um, what could have been spread out maybe over two years was spread out over 10 months. But what I also learned was that, you know, ever source charges us interest, the longer we, we spread out this debt supposedly that, you know, uh, the, the state has, uh, to them um, by this power purchase agreement that they have. So I think one of the drivers was to have this hit and, even though normally with rates, we want to see steady and low increases or no increases and consistency without spikes. That costs the taxpayer more money because you, you know, you have to spread out over more and then that actually drives up the financing cost for that. So that was kind of an interesting fact. I learned more about this. It's very complicated. Um, and, um, I'm not seeing any relief necessarily, uh, that's going to be coming. Um, and um, I'm not seeing any relief necessarily uh, that's going to be coming in the near term. Um, but I do think we have some things in our favor that we'll be able to mitigate, you know, the budget. We might just have a shortfall and we really won't know the exact amount until the spring. So, um, so anyway, so that was the purpose today was really to kind of give a heads up that we are impacted and that there could be a need for an appropriation, um, you know, in the springtime to account for a budget shortfall from this.
Uh, what, what I was hoping to get out of this was just to sort of put a magnitude on it. Um, in, in the absence of that, I had visions of this being millions of dollars, just based on my own electric bill. Um, and um, and it looks like we're really staring down a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar shortfall, which we would fairly easily be able to cover out of the excess fund balance with a special appropriation when the time comes.
Yeah, that's correct, Bruce. And that would be the worst case scenario. Um, and the, and what we've done is we've put out uh, to all the staff at the schools in particular, to remove what are considered vampire power devices. Uh, these would be chargers, things like that, that they leave plugged in overnight. So those are gonna be all, those are all pulled out at this point. So we're really getting uh, a, a very serious about, you know, not having these uh, power thieves being plugged in or turned on. Uh, you know, which, which kind of became a habit over the past and we're, we're making sure that that's not happening.
I was, I was distressed to get the second email from EverSource saying there's gonna be another increase. Um, and this increase is to pay for all of the money that EverSource handed out for um, vehicle charging stations. So, um, I thank you to the legislature for um, allowing EverSource to hand out money that they then turn around and hit the repairs with.
So that is, you know, and I don't have the data here, but the um, EV stuff is, is a very small amount of what this is. This is uh, eighty percent millstone, and then there's a couple of other things in there, including EV. The next thing that we're gonna see, we're paying, what we're gonna see now, the next thing I was told was the storm uh, uh, work that they had to do, they get paid back for that. So from Isaias and all these major storms where they had to spend a lot of money to, for restoration, that now becomes a debt that gets paid back over time through rates. That's where there's really is gonna be potentially something that might happen. And I don't know the timing of it yet. I don't know, Peter, if you recall, did we get any sense of when that would hit? Cause they gotta go through PURA to do it, but they're gonna be asking to get paid back for all the storm recovery work that they paid.
Yeah, that, that, that does have to go through PURA and that they were anticipating that to be a year down the road.
It was a year, okay.
To Bruce's point, my understanding was that the rate increase for the EV, um, the upgrades that were necessary to support the EV trade, charging stations, that was going into effect on September one. So my understanding is that we had the rate increase that affected us over those really hot summer months. But then we were gonna see another small increase um, instituted on September one. So if these are our August bills that we're looking at here, we may see another uh, you know, increase. So it may be small uh, on our September and or, you know, October bill moving forward.
I'm not, I'm not as, I didn't get into the level of anything specific going in this September first. I don't recall him saying anything about that. But um, I think one of the issues is because this is based on usage, right? It started out at peak usage. Like if this program, if this, and I'm not excusing, or, or I'm just saying that I think everybody was so shocked because it started out in July, right? Which is usually peak usage month, right? Whereas if this had started out in January, it, you, you would have seen this, it's still gonna cost you a lot of money, but you would have seen this ramp up to it, right? Um, and so September, this next is obviously gonna be a lower bill. Um, I, I'm not aware of a specific new EV charge, but it could be there. I don't know. It's, I have no idea. Um, I do know though, that we're likely to see another spike unless, depending on how the negotiations go with PURA on the storm. I, I'll be honest, I had no idea that this was all getting passed directly on to uh, us over time. Um, to the ratepayers, I should say. Um, and then the other thing that was interesting, when we, um, I asked the EverSource rep, I said, well, has EverSource considered any kind of waiver for public safety? Because we got a big rate increase from Connecticut Water last year that was approved by PURA and they ended up ratcheting it back and not charging for public safety. Our hydrants, for example. Remember when we were going through the budget process? I went, oh my God, we're gonna have an eighty thousand dollar increase in our water budget because of this rate increase. They ended up ratcheting back on that and they did not charge municipalities for public safety. Um, so I did, you know, said, well, why isn't EverSource taking those same kinds of considerations? And I think they're trying to get every penny back, period, that they spend. So, um, so they're getting paid back on, you know, what they may consider an excess cost by having to buy power from millstone. Um, and then for any overtime or storm response, to get paid for that, back for that. So, um, so anyway, but yes, the EV piece is a part of this for sure. I'm not trying to diminish it, but at the same point, in the bigger picture, it is a very small piece of the pie. So I think, well, um, but to Bruce's point, this isn't a, you know, heart attack happening for us, fortunately. I know for some residents, it's been, you know, quite substantial, but um, we've also, because of our hedging and everything, have been able to contain part of that bill by having a good hedging strategy in place. So that's helped us out a lot. Um, and then hopefully, we're gonna benefit from these much more efficient buildings over the next couple of years, which is good.
Does all the hedging, just out of curiosity, Peggy? Is that, is that Stacy in the finance team?
Excuse me?
Who does all the, the hedging? Uh, just curious. Is that, is that our finance team?
We have a, we have a, uh, no, it's actually, um, the superintendent and myself and the facilities director have quarterly or uh, semi-annual meetings with a um, energy consultant who lives here in Madison. Um, he's worked for the town for a number of years. He's great. Um, and we review where the market is. He makes recommendations and um, and then we make decisions on contracts and we decide how long. Um, and it's been a lot of discussion because we could have hedged, had a longer term contract. It would have cost us a little more, but probably still worked favorably, but we don't know what our demand is gonna be with all the changes going on in our buildings. So this last round, we opted for uh, the one that um, will expire a year from now. Um, but it is really, uh, you know, um, I know Peter's just getting involved in this, but Bill McMinn and, and Tom Latour, who lives in Madison, um, been fantastic. Um, and you might have met him at some point, cause he's been with, been doing this for a really long time, I think. Bruce, I don't know if you know him.
Uh, uh, we, I, we, we've seen him in front of the board um, years ago. Um, and yeah, I would imagine that while our new energy demands are in flux and we settle in, we're just gonna have to be conservative in those, in those bets that we make. Um, they'll still be better than buying, um, you know, at the rate. But once we've got a little bit of a, at least one annual cycle with all of the new buildings under our belts, we'll be able to make some really good predictions about our need. Cause I, as I recall, the um, contracts are around demand. You're buying a set amount of energy, um, whether you need it or not. So you don't want to overbuy. That's the trend.
And that was the concern, right? Cause we, we, you know, so you're only, it's only a partial hedge. I guess it's not all our buy. I'm trying to remember another of the details of it. But um, and we'll be going through that discussion again. And maybe if the board wants, you know, we have Tom talk a little bit about that, you know, towards the end of the year. Because this is gonna continue, especially being in New England and in Connecticut. An ongoing, you know, operating expense, it's gonna be really challenging for, for us. So, um, and by going geothermal, you're actually doubling down on electricity. But then you're, you're so much more efficient in the electricity that you use. We hope to still see savings. So, um, so it might be worth having the uh, uh, him come and talk a little bit about that and kind of a hedging and, and how it all, how we kind of work through it every year.
Historical footnote, uh, Bruce is correct. The Board of Selectmen originally hired Mr. Latoury, I believe in two thousand and eight, because we needed to get the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen out of the business of predicting energy prices.
Thank God.
Yeah, I mean, believe me, you, it's, Peter's been on one or two calls with them too. You, you got, you need to know this market really well, right? And that's why I think it's kind of hard for residents to figure this out, you know, cause now you have the option of making your own hedging contract, right? You can go in and I did it constellation, I locked in and to a new supplier and everything. But is, this market is very complicated and um, and it's also impacted by all the energy, other energy markets. So it's not like it's just a separate standalone thing. You're also, you know, and that, the natural gas market and the oil market all impact the electricity market also. So it's good that we have an expert. I will say that. Any other questions for Peter? No? Okay, great. Um, okay, so I, I didn't remember. Uh, actually, while Peter is here, um, if it's okay, I'd like to just address item number fifteen. These aren't voting items. Uh, just because, um, do you have the latest version of this town seal?
Uh, let me get it called up. They'll get it right here for you in a minute.
I'm, I have the one that Rita did. Did we get one back from them?
That, that's the most recent one that Rita did.
Okay, okay. So I, I can go ahead and screen share. So I just wanted to run by, we finally got around to our blue wall. And what, you know, we talked about putting the town seal behind there. So I wanted to show you a visual image of what that would look like. And then we would take James Madison and put James Madison back in that room on one of the sides. Um, and this would be more of an appropriate thing behind, size wise, behind the Board of Selectmen. Cause I know we've gotten some questions about this at the June meeting and I thought, time flies, right? I, I really has been over a year and a half since we painted the wall. So it was time to do this. Um, I will share my screen and I think I, yeah. So this was what we were thinking and we were struggling with. Do we get a painting? Do we do a um, but Peter, actually, um, there is a, what is this made out of? It's like a screen printed thing, like a sticker basically, right? That would go up on the,
Large vinyl detail, yeah.
Um, so this would be kind of, it's not quite the colors and everything. This was what Rita had put together as a visual. Um, but this was, the thought was putting the seal behind there on the wall. So I wanna get your thoughts, um, you know, uh, as to if this would be, and then we would, like I said, we change, put James Madison on the side, uh, uh, to the right of this probably where that other map is or something. So he's in the James Madison room. Um, and then we would have the town logo.
Yeah, or I mean, we could also just move the other town logo painting that's near the flag cause you don't need two town logos in the room anymore. Um, we can hang that elsewhere and then have James Madison over there. But I do like the logo in and of itself, just being consistent with what we have on all of our welcome signs and, you know, whatnot around town.
Yeah, maybe just put James Madison where the logo is and that makes it easy.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and, um, and I, I do wanna talk about the colors. You just raised a great point because uh, we used gold, a gold leaf and everything with our signs. So, um, we might wanna try to match the signs a little bit more. I think this was just done with, well, this is our V card, right? Uh, Peter, um, so this is kind of,
I believe this off a letterhead.
Oh, okay. Um, so anyway, so this is the concept. We'll refine this. But e- everybody's good with that then, if we do something similar to this?
Yeah, that's great.
All right, it'll be good. I think it'll look nice and um, and just, you know, and then we will, James Madison will return um, to, to the James Madison room. So, okay, great. I think that's all I wanted to just run that by everybody, make sure they're good with that. Um, and with that, we'll stop sharing. And then I think, uh, uh, now we're, uh, oh, we gotta go back to item number fourteen. Um, discuss and take action to approve the charge for the Madison two hundred, American two hundred, two fifty steering committee.
Approved.
Second.
Okay, um, this, we had talked about this at our last meeting. And I don't think I got any specific comments back on it. But I'm here to take changes or suggestions. Now?
Nope.
Everybody's good with it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll move forward with the appointment process, um, so we can get the seats, hopefully the committee seated towards the end of October. Um, so with that, I guess all in favor, say aye.
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 Right? Exciting to see that move forward. And then we'll put out a call for some, um, we have a couple of public members. Um, and then with that, I guess we're on to item number uh, sixteen, uh, citizens' comments. Don't think we have too many people left.
No, nobody's on.
Nope. Okay, great.
We could just make Matt talk.
True, Matt's on.
We can make him talk.
You should just give him a briefing, John.
The whole thing.
Sitting next to you? Is he just right next to you?
He's in a different part of the house, but he's a diligent observer of our meetings.
When he's always there, probably cooking dinner, hopefully, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
All right, with that then, I guess, uh, hearing no objection. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.